No matter what, we would have to turn off it. Isn't that easy?
So you go through the hall and then...
So no matter what, I did. I did. Very, I knew how to do it.
Yeah, well, it's nice to have that down.
No, effectively. I like that people are close to me.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this first organizational meeting of the Board of School Trustees for the Vigo County School Corporation. At this time, we're all going to stand and do the pledge. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Amy Lour.
Present.
Rick Berger.
Present.
Christina Chris.
Present.
Carrie LaBella.
Present.
Stacy Killian.
Present.
Ken Warner.
Present.
And JD Skelton.
Present.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome Judge Mulliken to the front to perform the oath of office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you stand and raise your white hand to repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Amy Lour.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will honestly.
And that I will honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
School Board.
School Board.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my knowledge.
And to the best of my knowledge.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
To help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Judge Mulliken, for doing that with us. At this time, we will begin the organization of the board, and we will begin with election of board officers. Is there a nomination for the Office of President of the School Board?
I'd like to make a nomination for Stacy Killian as president.
I second that.
With a nomination and a second, is there any discussion or other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions? Congratulations, President Killian.
At this time, I will accept nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Rick Berger for Vice President.
Is there a second? I'll second that. You have a nomination and a second for Rick Berger, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions? Congratulations, President Killian.
At this time, I will accept nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Rick Berger for Vice President.
Is there a second? I'll second that. You have a nomination and a second for Rick Berger, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, Mr. Rick Berger. And at this time, we do accept nominations for the Office of Secretary.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Christina Chris to be our secretary.
You have a nomination for Christina Chris, is there any other nominations?
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you, Mrs. LaBella. There's a motion and a second for Christina Chris, are there any others? Not seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Christina Chris, to be sent here. All right, we're going to try to move through this a little quickly. I know it's a little long, but we do have nominations, or I'm sorry, appointments of our committees. We'll just go through, and board members, please speak up if you, I'm going to say who has emailed Amy ahead of time to express their interest in serving on that committee or continue serving. If you are okay with that, then we will just kind of move down the line. Do we have to do...
We need to do a nominations.
Each, a nomination.
Well, I mean, like, somebody needs to make the motion to...
Approve. So approve each one individually? Okay. The appointment of the board member to serve on the bond oversight committee for the School of Trustees. We have Ken Warner, Stacy Killian, and Carrie LaBella.
Madam President, I'd like to move that the current committee serve in the next year as well, so keep the same numbers.
Thank you. There's been a motion to accept the members that are currently serving to continue that service on the bond oversight, is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you. Board members to serve on the Finance Committee of the School Board of Trustees. The current committee was Rick Berger, Stacy Killian, and Carrie LaBella. The suggested new committee would be Ken Warner, Christina Christ, and Carrie LaBella. Do I have any motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstention? Thank you. Appointment of the Policy Committee of the Board of School Trustees. The current Policy Committee is Amy Lour, Stacy Killian, and Carrie LaBella, and that has been suggested that those members continue to serve. Do I have a motion to accept that?
I make a motion to accept that, those three.
And a second?
Second. Oh, sorry. I second.
Thank you, Christina. We have a motion and a second for Policy Committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. Thank you. The ISBA Legislative Liaison, currently it was Stacy Killian, and it is proposed to be Christina Christ.
Madam President, I move that Christina Christ be our ISBA Legislative Liaison for 2025. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Or abstain. Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of a board member to serve on the Vigo County Education Foundation. Stacy Killian currently serves, and I would like to continue that service on that committee.
I'll make a nomination that we keep Stacy Killian on the VCEE.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of a board member to attend the meetings of the Building Trades Advisory Council. Currently, that is JD Skelton and Ken Warner. It has been suggested to be Ken Warner and Christina Christ.
Madam President, I'll nominate Ken Warner and Christina Christ to serve on the Building Trades Advisory Council. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. Thank you. Next, we have the meetings of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. I have that listed.
Sorry, Amy, I don't have that one listed. It's supposed to be... I don't have it listed either. Me, it was supposed to be me. I think I would like to do it. It's... I'll nominate Amy Lour to the advisory committee.
Is there another, I'm sorry, we don't have that one in front of us, is there another board member that has served on that previously?
I can...
Was it Ken? Oh, it was Jackie.
I'd like to nominate Ken Warner for that position as well.
Okay. Okay, we have a nomination for Ken Warner and Amy Lour to serve on the, excuse me, the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee to attend those meetings. Do we have a second for those nominations?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of a board member to attend meetings of the Health and Wellness Advisory Council. It was JD Skelton and Jackie Lauer. It is now suggested to be JD Skelton and Christina Christ.
I second that. I guess I make the motion, I'm sorry.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. Thank you. Next, we have appointment of the board member to attend meetings of the Vigo County Parent Network Committee. I have served in that role, and I'd like to continue to serve in that role.
I'll make a motion that Stacy continues to serve the parent network.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. Next, we have the appointment of a board member to attend meetings of the Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission, which is appointed by the city's mayor. Last year, it was Amy Lour, and again, the mayor has suggested Amy Lour continue on that role.
Do we need a motion, or? Don't believe we need to.
No action.
No actions.
I'm sorry, thank you. No action is needed since the mayor does appoint that position. And last, we have the county redevelopment, which the county commissioners appoint that person to serve in that role. And that has been Rick Berger last year, and they would like to continue with Rick Berger in that role.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I noticed before, we also put the alternates in there, and we're not this time. Did we miss that, or are we not going to do that?
Just, so I had the opportunity to review the bylaws of the school corporation, or of the school board regarding the committee assignments. There's nothing in there that says we have to name an alternate, and the way things worked out last year, we kind of had to go with, like, whoever was available if you couldn't do it. So as, instead of just naming an actual alternate, we're going to go with, you know, whoever answers your call first. Because that seems to be a much more practical way to do it. If you'd like to go back and do that, feel free, but yeah.
Just curious.
Is everyone comfortable in that we all communicate if there's an alternate needed, if we can't attend a meeting? Thank you, Mr. Warner. Next, we have the appointment of the Corporation Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer. That would be...
We recommend as presented by Donna Wilson.
And that would be Donna and Cindy DeHart, correct?
So I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstain. Thank you. Next, we have to designate legal counsel for the Vigo County School Corporation for calendar year 2025.
We recommend that we continue utilizing Church, Churchill, and Antrim with Andrew Manis serving as our primary contact for legal counsel.
I'll make a motion to accept that recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstain. Next, to designate a qualified newspaper for legal notices for calendar year 2025.
And we recommend that we continue utilizing Terre Haute Tribune Star.
I will make the motion that we accept that nomination. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to continue using the Tribune Star, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of abstentions. Thank you. We need to designate board compensation for board members for calendar year 2025.
Is there a presentation from the school corporation about that?
There is, and our recommendation is to continue with what was previous year.
Which, to be clear, board members have typically taken the very lowest salary possible, the $2,000 allotted by the state. We do not take a per diem, so that's what we're talking about.
So at this time, it's just to, it is considered that we continue with the $2,000 a year stipend to serve as a Vigo County School Board member, as allowed for the state of Indiana.
And then whatever the extra amount was that was recommended from a year ago, do you recall? There's a standard amount that's done for extra meetings, that is done for so much per meeting, that is outside of the normal regular meetings.
Which we have traditionally foregone. Yeah, that's not, that's what I think, so we need a motion for that, then.
Just need a motion, if you, to continue with what we've done, then the motion is to continue with what we've done.
Right, so to, I will make a motion that we continue on with year 2024 salary compensation for board members in calendar year 2025.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to continue with what we currently have done in 2024, is there any discussion? Seeing none, everyone, all those can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Or abstention? Thank you. And the adoption of the meeting schedule for the boards, regular board meetings, Finance Committee meetings, and Policy Committee meetings as presented previously from Dr. Hemsel, two board members?
I will make a motion to accept the recommended schedule of meetings. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify...
I just want to point out, those finance and policy and, I think, also the bond meetings, those are evening meetings moving forward, correct?
The bond meetings are typically whenever the people can be there and are not regularly scheduled, depending on where we're at with the bond stuff. Sometimes that depends on whether we have to bring in someone from the outside to make sure that everybody can attend. With the finance and the policy committees, we have put on a regular schedule at a regular time, and yes, those are expected to be at six o'clock.
Yes.
Obviously, if there's something that makes it so that we need to reschedule or change the time, we have that option of doing so as long as we get 48 hours notice.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out, those are the public meetings that we were trying to make more accessible to the public, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Lour. For any other discussion on the adoption of our regular board meetings, Finance Committee and Policy Committee meetings, as well as bond series? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstention? Thank you. At this time, I would seek an adjournment of the organization meeting of the board with also a motion to consider opening the regular board meeting for this evening.
I will make a motion to adjourn the organization meeting and immediately open the regular board meeting. Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? End of staying. All right, thank you, and welcome to our first meeting of the new year 2025 with our new board sworn in and in place. At this time, I'd like to make it open for the first call of citizen comments. This is just on agenda items only, and at this time, I don't see that, so we will go on to our consent agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstain. Thank you. New business, we have a grant from Mr. Doug Julian. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for considering this grant this evening. We just received notification of the grant on December 23rd, that we did receive this competitive grant, and we would like to use some of the funding later this month. So that's why it was so important that it went in front of the board today. This grant was basically targets career pathway education, and we have basically a four-pronged approach to it. First, targeting eighth graders going into the ninth grade and better, trying to better educate them on the career pathway opportunities at the high school, which later this month, they will actually, we will be busing them to actually tour the high schools and see the, all the various opportunities of this grant will help pay for travel, et cetera. The second prong was parent education opportunities related to pathways, and we had some really, we brought a committee together before writing this grant, and came up with some really unique ideas from putting out yard signs where buses drop off and parents drop off, reminding them when it's time to sign up for dual college credit, or when it's time to study for industry credentials, and so on, as well as doing some geofencing related specific pathways. And we've actually got an outside company that helped us write that part. The third part is counselor and teacher professional development to reduce pathway gaps. We've had a high turnover of counselors, and we want to take this opportunity to offer a modified counselor academy where we can educate them on not just the career pathway, but the opportunities after the high school of the pathway, whether it be a post-secondary opportunity, apprenticeship program, and then ultimately what that career looks like for a child. And then the last part is a, some extra funding to support CT students that are like one class away from a technical certification. In the past, we had another grant that helped with this, and that grant had expired, and we didn't realize how much it was going to be missed until it was expired. So we wanted to include some funding in there, and I know Ivy Tech applied for another grant, and they also included some funding for the entire region. And so it's just to fill gaps, to make sure if a student has an opportunity to earn an associate's degree, a technical certificate or something, we make sure to get them across that finish line. With that, I'll gladly answer any questions and hope you approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the career pathway grant. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Julian?
What's the timing for the eighth grade, like, trip to visit? Is it this month?
Yeah, North is actually happening, I remember their date, I believe it's January 22nd. But we also have some targeted students that we want to take to, early in February, to Ivy Tech to learn about some pathways that they maybe don't. I can't remember the exact date of Souths, but I believe it's within a day of North's visit. And of course, West Vigo, little different situation, they get to walk down the hall, so we don't, it's a little bit easier to do there. So we're looking at pretty fast, and we're actually bringing our first group of teachers in to kind of focus on filling in gaps on January 10th.
And this will be for all eighth graders to come to the high school?
Yes, all eighth graders, we're bringing all eighth graders, and they're going to look at CT pathways, but they're also going to look at things like music and other content areas that they may not be aware of those opportunities, performing arts, for example. You have dance teams and things, the more we can get kids engaged, the more successful they'll be in high school. So the goal is to help them transition, get engaged in something at the high school, and then be successful.
I love the parent component of that, though, because I think there's nothing scarier than thinking you've missed an opportunity for your kid when they're at that stage, so.
Yes, and that's one thing that came out when we interviewed some parents, is like dual credit signup, why do you need that? What timeframe does it happen? And we thought, you know, just some simple geofencing and some yard signs out that we can pull back in, hey, this is the time. Ask your kid, did they sign, fill out the dual credit things, we thought that would be really helpful, and it applies to all areas, not just CT.
Does that dual credit, does that apply to all grade levels in high school, or is that...
All grade levels in high school, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Does that dual credit, does that apply to all, all grade levels in high school, or is that?
All grade levels in high school, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain. Thank you, Mr. Dillian. At this time, we are open for second call for citizens' comments, and I do have one from Mary Howard Hamilton on the subject of diversity. And you will have three minutes, and Mrs. Shane, are you still being our timekeeper?
Mr. Berger's not the timekeeper.
I'm not. They kicked me out of that one.
Thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome. Good evening, newly elected President Killian, Superintendent, and board members. We do have, I'm here actually representing the Terre Haute 10, and as well as just have a couple of general comments. Was wondering, the grant that Mr. Dillian just shared with us, which is pretty exciting, what was the dollar amount on that? I, we didn't hear what was given.
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-five thousand, okay, thank you. And the other question is, will the grant, the programming be in collaboration with any other organizations in the community? Or, like, for example, with arts and whatnot? Is this going to be in collaboration, for example, with Booker T. Washington Center or any other group in the city?
It's focused on eighth graders to get them prepared for what the opportunities are. And the timing of this is for when they complete their high school scheduling for the first time.
Okay.
And this is particularly important because we have new graduation requirements for this particular group of eighth graders. So, did you want to elaborate further?
We, we do, this grant will help support, like, the, there, there's some career opportunities. One at the, that's held on my shoes campus, Sylvester Edwards helps organize it. And, and so, there'll be some targeted opportunities where we're looking at kids that maybe haven't found their way, or haven't found their niche, or haven't found their passion, and it doesn't matter if they're a sophomore or junior, you know, we want them to find their passion. So, we will, this grant will also help support those type of opportunities.
It's good to hear. I was hoping that, that that would be the case, and maybe connection with churches and other, other ways to get the word out on this, because it's a pretty exciting grant. Thank you. Also, just wanted to give everyone a friendly reminder that January 20th is Martin Luther King Day, and we do hope that the schools will be encouraged to find some, although it's a day off, that there's a day on with some type of volunteer activity or programming. There is a panel at the History Museum that evening, encouraging everyone to attend. Thank you. And next month being also Black History Month, encouraging people, as well as the teachers, to be very much engaged with that. We're also looking forward to working collaboratively with you, with, and that includes our conversations with the superintendent, as usual. And at, at some point in time, we, we would like to ask to, to make a formal presentation, and we'll work with, we'll ask Dr. Dr. Hensel how those things are coordinated with the board so that we can come and have more than, just more than three minutes. You know, nothing, nothing elaborate, but just more than three minutes to chat. And congratulations, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, we will move on to the information from Superintendent Hensel and board members.
Yeah, first of all, we hope everybody had a great holiday season, enjoyed the time off. We are excited to have the kids return. Obviously, with the weather, that is in question. I know that it's disappointing for some, but we are going to be waiting until the morning to make a decision. Our county and city have committed resources to be working throughout the night, and we want to see how much progress they make through the night, and not just assume where things stand based on now, when we know that they still have 12 hours of work ahead of them that they've committed to doing. And so, we have a group of bus drivers and others who, every morning, go out and, that we have weather concerns, go out and drive different roads across the district, and they will be doing that tomorrow as part of that normal routine, and we will make it as early in the morning as possible. If you want more information about those, we do have some guidelines that we use to help guide our decisions. Those are on our website, these have been on our website for quite a while. I think we've even done a parent square sending, send out of that information as well. We understand that there's people who would like to have that decision made, but we also recognize we have parents who need our kids to get back in school so that they can go to work because of daycare issues. We also know that we have some kids who depend on us and count on us because they qualify for free or reduced-price lunch. And many of the donations that were made at the beginning of break, those have expired and ran out since we've been away for two, for two weeks. We recognize that there's other issues that are going on with some of our families, and we want to make sure that if we are able to have school tomorrow onsite, we are having school onsite. But until we get to morning, we're not going to be sure, because obviously, we want to make sure our buses can safely navigate our roads. I also want to make sure I take this time to say thank you to the City of Terre Haute. Thank you to Vigo County. Their road crews were incredible today. I think many of us were surprised on how much progress they made, given the volume of snow that we received. But I thought they just did a fantastic job of putting us in a position to where this is even possible. And we'll see how their work goes in the evening and see where we stand in the morning. I also want to say thank you to all of our custodial staff and our facility staff who are out clearing snow off of parking lots and off of sidewalks. They also did a fantastic job today and made a tremendous amount of progress. Without the work of the city, the county, the state road crews, and our custodial staff and our facility staff, we wouldn't be in a position where we can even think about that. And I'm very blessed, we are very blessed, to have a lot of people who worked really hard today to put us in a position where our kids can get back to school as quickly as possible. So, thank you to all those people who did that work.
And the board members like to make any statements or comments?
I'd just like to thank all of the, the schools that sent Christmas cards to the board. We don't usually get a chance to send a reply to every single one of those, but they are appreciated, and thank you very much.
I would just like to say I'm looking forward to a new year. Welcome, Christina, to our group of seven, serving the Vigo County School Corporation. And thank you to all those that braved the weather this evening to come and be supportive of Christina, or just to hear and be an active community member for our school corporation. And I'm looking forward to the year ahead and what we have in store. So, thank you all, and Happy New Year. As a reminder, our next meeting is January 27th, Monday, 6:00 p.m. here in the Administration Office Conference Center. And I hope everyone has enjoyed the new setup. We hope it's more welcoming, in case you do need to leave or sneak out,